I'd like to call this regular meeting in the German Township trustees to order. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Hayston, can we have the roll call?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross here.
Mr. Stubbs here.
Mr. Potter is not here.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Potter from this evening's meeting. He is with his father.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have excused Mr. Potter from tonight's meeting.
Go next to visitor comments. Julie, do you want to say something? Come on up and good to see you. Vertical.
Again, I thank you for the privilege and the honor of speaking to you about our Sunshine in a Bag ministry. This is our 10th year and we were able to continue it even when COVID was at its highest and so rampant because Mrs. Amanda Phillips wears about 18 different hats at the intermediate building. It's where she's stationed, but I guess she's rarely in her office. Contacted me about if she would get volunteers to deliver bags to the children's homes. Would we still have been able to do sunshine? So fortunately, we have been able to continue even during COVID because of her efforts and her volunteers that deliver on Thursday nights to all the children's homes. And it's really a blessing to hear some of the reports from these drivers. In fact, one of the gentlemen who's also in the Lions Club with Mark let me know that one evening last year when he delivered the food to a little girl, answered the door and the food was for her and her brother. And she answered the door, she heard, he heard her saying to mom, mom, we've got food now. So it breaks your heart to realize that in a community such as Germantown and Germantown Township, that the need still exists, that it does. And we are honored and privileged to be able to provide this service to the students at Valley View. Currently, as I mentioned, this is our 10th year of doing this, our 10th school year. And again, we sure are appreciative of Amanda Phillips and her volunteers that get these bags of food to the children's homes each week. And we found that this works a lot better because of the stigma, especially for the junior high and the high school students who might get ridiculed for having the need for this food. We tried until COVID hit and Amanda and her volunteers started doing the deliveries. We would take the bags of food for the junior high and senior high students to those respective offices. And then those secretary's to please come get, please come to the office. All the other students knew what they were going to the office for. So we've hopefully eliminated that stigma and by getting the food directly to the students' homes. Currently, we are serving 140 students at an average cost of about $4 per bag. That's $560 a week. We pack for two weeks at a time. So that comes out to $1,120 for every packing that we do. And we pad two times a month. So 11, 20 times the two packings is $2,240. And we have been so fortunate for boards such as yours, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club of Germantown and Farmer'sville to support this mission over the years. We couldn't have done it without you. And we are certainly appreciative of anything and everything that you can do for us this year. Because we always think, how are we going to afford this? And God provides every year. So we are grateful to Him and to everybody that does provide for us. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work.
It's not hard work. It's fun. We make it fun.
Well, I do appreciate it.
And we appreciate appreciation.
It means a lot to the community, trust me.
Oh, yes, it does. Yes, it does. And you know, as I mentioned, the one story about the little girl saying, mommy, you've got food now, you know. Breaks your heart. That makes us so glad that you can do it. Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you and your program and everything you guys do. Can we go ahead and pass the resolution?
Of course.
Number 43.
It doesn't. Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2022-43. A resolution approving a $2,000 donation donation from the WK Thoughts Trust Fund to Sunshine in a Bag.
Thank you so much.
And I will second that.
Is there any discussion of Resolution 2022-43?
I can't think of a better place for the money to go because you guys impact so many people across our entire Valley View community. And hopefully this helps you guys keep going a little longer. But I know I appreciate the board, the board appreciates what you guys do for the kids of our community.
Right. I just wish we could reach more, but you know, just wish we could reach more. But the ones that need it the worst, we hope we are reaching.
And this does follow the spirit of what the original intent of the fund was for. So we're appreciative that we can help you guys out.
I had the honor of being able to have Julie, Mrs. Smith, give me a tour of the Sunshine in a Bag facility. Encourage you to go up if you've never seen it. It's very impressive. How they put that together.
We try to keep it organized.
Just like to remind everybody here that's listening that the church also accepts donations from individuals for Sunshine in a Bag. So I would encourage people to find during this time given. And as Mr. Hayston said, I haven't toured the facility, but I actually donated an old scooter. I had that at the church and they had a pusher. While I was there dropping that off, I talked to some people who were volunteering and packing bags. And the enthusiasm these people have while they're doing this was just infectious. I mean, they truly love being able to help.
I'd say it's a labor of love.
Who am I, Q and B, sir?
I would be Mark Skinner, 7865.
Oh, okay, thank you. Julie, you should probably say your name and address, too.
Yeah, right. But legal name is Julie, yeah. For 35 years, Bob's called me Julie, so I'll answer to anything. Address is 511 West Market Street, Germantown.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-43 is adopted. I'll get that check written and I'll be giving it to you next Monday night.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Julie, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for coming up here.
Thank you again.
Hopefully Bob's doing well.
Doing much better, thankfully.
I did hear that.
Rough road.
Yes, he did. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any other visitor comments? Do you want to maybe wait, you want to do it now as far as the judge? Maybe just wait for my report to do it then?
Yeah, that's fine.
David, anything? Okay, let's move on to the fiscal officers' report.
Very good. Good evening again, everyone. I've got a number of items tonight, so I'll get started. First of all, with the minutes from the meeting of November 14th. Are there any corrections?
I probably had a correction. It was on the zoning department report. I think it's the second. Number two. I think it probably should, more accurately should read, Dr. Cross is trying to update the OTA member list to reflect that Mrs. Close is an associate member. That will allow her to register for the OTA conference at the member rate. I got that online. Will you copy that? So I think that's probably more accurate. I'll discuss that in my report.
Okay, any other corrections? Amendments?
I have no other corrections.
I would entertain a motion to approve them as corrected.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 11, 14, 22 regular meeting minutes as corrected.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I've also given you the November financial reports. As usual, you get five different reports. You have the fund status report asked at the end of November. You have the year-to-date through November cash summary by fund. You have the month of November cash summary by fund. You have the November receipts and you have the November payments. And I do want to note about four different items. First of all, receipt number 152 is $86,624.42. And that is from the state of Ohio and that represents our second half homestead and rollback tax payments.
Other question?
Yes.
Does that consider the local government fund with those two?
No.
No, it's separate.
No, the homestead is the ability of seniors over 65 who have limited income to reduce their real estate tax.
Right.
The state picks up and gives us that from their end. And the rollback is, I guess the best way to describe it is as we continue to renew levies, the homeowner doesn't pay for the higher value of their property. So the state gives us a portion of that.
Well, I asked, I understand. Thanks, Mark.
The local government fund is something completely different. Warrant number 50616 for $10,000 to the city of Germantown is the payment that you approved at last month's meeting. The funds were to be used to pay for the improvements at the new Miami Military Institute Park. And as Mr. Potter explained last month, the city already had sufficient invoices to pay that bill when you approved that payment. Warrant number 50620 in the amount of $10,307.24 to the First National Bank of Germantown. It's a semi-annual payment on the Valley View Water and Sewer District loan. The remaining amount that we still have to pay, and that'll be paid twice a year through December 1st of 2025, and that total amount is $61,843.50. And finally, warrant number 50621 for $473,257.83 to the city of Germantown is the second half payment of all of our joint levy funds. And as you approved back at the beginning of the year, I gave the 90% of the tax receipts less any related expenses for all the funds except for the road levy fund. And the road levy fund payment to the city is actually 100% of their share, which is based on property valuations. So are there any questions or comments about besides the one already on the financials? If not, then I get a motion to.
Mr. Keener.
Mr. Keener.
Is the property valuation for that road levy is still roughly right at 50/50? Has that changed?
It's not quite 52 anymore. I believe it's closer to 5248.
Oh, wow.
I could go pull it after the meeting and give you the exact numbers. But each year, of course, when we get the new valuation numbers, I use those for the calculation. Make a note. All right, if there's no other questions, can I have a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of November bills? And I won't read all that because typically you do, doctor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November financial reports and authorize the payment of November bills. Warrants 50616 through 50621 and vouchers 910 through 985 for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholding, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Let me just make, anybody online, if you have a question, don't hesitate to try to get through. I'll try to unmute you. Sorry, Mark.
That's okay. All right, the next item we've already covered, which is the donation from the Faust Fund. So I'll move on to item five on my report. To assist the police and road departments in preparing their 2023 budgets, I recently provided year-to-date analyses of our spending by account number along with my estimate of the total year spending and also then the estimated year-end fund balances. Now, before we meet at the end of December for this year's budget meeting, there is an issue I would really like to resolve ahead of time related to our elected official salaries. During last year's budget review meeting, the trustees, a 25% salary reduction and the allocation of trustee and fiscal officer salaries to the police, road, and trash departments was discussed. It was decided at that point not to make a change for 2022, but to revisit the issue for 2023. I now believe that the 2023 general fund can comfortably afford to eliminate the 25% reduction in trustee salaries and also to suspend allocating the trustee and fiscal officer salaries to other departments. The general fund started this year with a $192,000 balance and I am projecting the increase. And what, I'm sorry, 192,000 balance, which was projected to increase to 195,000 by the end of the year. Just a $3,000 increase. My current estimate is that the general fund balance at the end of December will be 250,000. And this is primarily due to four reasons. One, the $10,000 zoning permit fee paid by the Valley View local schools. Two, an $11,000 increase over our budget for the local government funds that we do receive from the state of Ohio. Three, a nearly $26,000 increase in interest revenue due to the transfer of excess funds to Star Ohio, which as you know, pays interest at a significantly higher rate than First National Bank of Germantown. As an example, in November, First National Bank paid 0.05% and Star Ohio paid 3.7%. And lastly, zoning expenses this year are projected to be $3,000 lower than the amount that was budgeted. So if you'd like to make a change to how your trustee salaries as well as a change to the allocations to the three departments, would be helpful to have that information tonight to allow both the police and the road budgets as well as the trash budget I prepare to be more accurate when you review them at the budget meeting. I don't think that's going to require a motion or a resolution. You can just tell me what you'd like us to do because you're going to approve those budgets in their entirety at the organizational meeting in January. Now, what's the effect if you would decide to go back to 100% salaries and have them only in the general fund? The eliminating all of that would increase officials' salaries in the general fund from 30,830 this year to 70,050 next year, an increase of almost $40,000. Conversely, if you continue the current situation for 2023, I estimate that the general fund balance will increase from 250,000 at the end of this year to 284,000 at the end of next year. Again, a $34,000 increase, a little bit less than what the total cost to the budget in the general fund would be if you go with 100% salaries and no allocation. And without, I open it up for discussion.
So the increase this year was based on, to the general fund, was the $10,000 zoning permit, which is a one-time thing from Valley View. And the $11,000 increase from the local government fund is probably likely a one-time deal, too, I would assume, right? Or is that going to continue?
I think they underestimate every year.
Okay.
I did not go back and check earlier years. And I can't recall what 2021 was like, but it would not surprise me if that would continue.
Okay.
I have estimated local government fund next year to be 27,000. And actually, this year it's going to be 34,000. So I did actually bump it down a little, thinking it might not continue.
Right. Okay. So my concern, moving it all at once to the general fund is the sustainability for years to come. So because we're sitting good now, doesn't mean we will be in two or three years. Leaving the salaries allocated to the funds, I think gives us some flexibility if we can, if we still have an excess, maybe we can make a payment to, from the general fund to the road department or to the police department. But taking it away, I think it'll be hard to argue in the future that we get it back in the case that that comes up. So that's just my thoughts on the moving everything to the general fund all at once. Do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, the 25% reduction came during my first four years.
Yeah, we've done that for what, five or six years now?
I have no problem either way. I think that, you know, this job is a little tougher than most people think. And I guess it's up to most, you know, taking the advice of Mr. Hayston and that we can, it's a yearly thing anyway, so we can reevaluate.
Right.
I think if we go back to 100% and let the police funds and the trash funds and the road fund get that extra money back because they won't be paying our salaries. I think we'd be okay.
And I think also looking in the future, the sewer district comes off, water and sewer district comes off in a couple of years. So that'll give us $20,000 a year we're spending currently out of the general fund as well to hopefully build, keep building that up. As for the salaries, yeah, I mean, we've done this for five years. I think Jackson Township's back to full. The full. It's just whatever the board thinks of that, so.
Jeremy first, going to go.
My only question is, is. If you guys decide to go back to 100% and keep it at 25% or whatever, I think it's 25%, then that would take even more away from our budget than what we're currently paying. Because you're right now, you're sitting at the reduced rate. So I mean, that's, like Mark said, it'd be kind of nice to know. You're going to, you know, I don't care any which way you do it, but I just, you know, one way it's, you know, the amount coming out of the road is going to go up and the other one it's going to go away, so.
One of the things that led me to suggest this is the interest income. I do not see the interest rates dropping next year. So not only have we increased interest this year by over 26,000 more than budget, next year's going to even be bigger because I didn't move that money until mid-year, July, August. So we have a full year of the higher rate with Star Ohio next year. But eventually, to your point, Mr. Stubbs, those interest rates are going to drop. And the increase in the, the general fund is going to be hit by that. So it's just something that if we could resolve it tonight, it makes it easier for the chief or Jeremy to decide how they can spend their budget based on what they're getting in income. Mr. Keener?
For self, Mr. Hayston, I would like to commend you for taking the time. I had had a discussion when we first took over. I wish I would have had the time to allocate money back. I'm glad you're doing that with Star Ohio. I mean, because that makes, obviously prevents it. So my hat is off to you, patting you on the back, shaking your hand, every other commendation I can do for doing. I mean, because it, I mean, it's a lot of work and you're having to project expenditures, you know, looking at the passion flow and there's a lot of moving stuff around, monitoring cash flow. When we did the salary reduction, and it hasn't been five years ago, you know, our general fund was a little under 50,000. It was dropping by 20, 25,000 here. So we were looking at two years till we were. You know, did the salary reductions, we tightened a lot of bills, we really worked hard. I think when I left, somewhere around 100. So I don't remember exactly what it was.
I don't remember either, but I recall at last year's budget meeting, you asked the question, what would you be comfortable with in a general fund? I believe you said 150,000.
Exactly. And now we're over that.
We're 100 over.
Yeah. And so I would, I'm, as a citizen now, knowing what I know about this whole situation here at the township, if I'm 100% in favor of giving the officials back 100% of their salaries. Mr. Cross pointed out, it is a lot more work than a lot of people think. And we now have probably the most active hands-on board that I've seen since I started coming, I mean, seven years ago. I like what Mr. Stubbs is saying with, and we go ahead and keep allocating, but then, and you're going to have to forgive me because I don't remember the exact terminology from a funded accounting standpoint, but basically, if the general fund make a transfer, not in advance, but a permanent transfer from the general fund to the road department and a transfer from the general fund, these budget for whatever that 25% salary or the allocation. But anyway, I think whatever is being allocated to those, that basically reimbursed for them. And that keeps the allocation going in case it does have to go back. Or we can adjust, you know, maybe for some reason we can only give them back half of what they're being charged for some reason. But that also legitimizes being able to continue allocating, and it's not a huge amount, but continue allocating, or Mr. Stubbs' salaries, what was your salary, Mr. Easton, to the trash fund, which can very much afford, I think, money allocated out for seven years. So I think we would be hard pressed to justify the others if we're allocating money to the trash fund, not allocating.
We do not need any justification to make that transfer in the general fund at any point in time. Although we are currently transferring 4,000 a year to the road department to cover an estimated cost of cemetery mowing. But we can transfer any amount at any time that the trustees would wish to do so. And that is a very workable way of doing that. If you want to reinstate salaries, keep the allocation, and then we budget a transfer in approximately of the amount that each of the funds would be paying additionally. So that's something you'd like to do. It'd be basically a wash, but it would be an annual decision on how much to transfer. And if you'd like to go that way, we'll, I'll calculate all that out and we'll get that into the budgets when we review them at the end of December.
So I think for an example for this year, since you're saying that you think that the general fund could withstand all of it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to making a transfer to each department covering the entire salary of all the elected officials. That way you guys do come out ahead this year. But then it does give us the option, not that we didn't have the option either way, but if something happens and we lose all our general fund, we still have it in place where it just goes back to how we had it before. So I would be in favor of allocating a payment to the police fund and the road fund and the amount of the entire salaries. That way they can have a little bit extra in their funds this year, if that makes sense.
If you agree, Dr. Cross, I'll make that calculation and give it to.
It sounds overly complicated to me.
It really will not be. The calculation is a one-time calculation. We can make that transfer on day one. We can make it at any time. You'll have to authorize the transfer when it comes time to make it. You know, we'll put it in the budget.
My assumption would be January, first meeting in January, we'd make the payment to the.
Does the timing of the transfer have any bearing on Star Ohio? And the reason I ask that is, is if the board wants to wait till like, say, August or July to make that transfer to get as much money, you know, well, to get as much interest earned as possible on that money. Because we, you know, we don't do our big spending till July in the road department as far as our contracted resurfacing, striding and all those, you know, outsourced jobs that cost the bulk of our budget. I didn't know if moving that money on day one would affect the Star Ohio interest that's being earned or leaving the. the Star Ohio interest that's being earned or leaving it in the general fund till, say, July or August would help that money sit in there and earn a little more interest? Or is all of the road department's money in there as well?
The total amount we would earn from Star Ohio does not matter whether the money sitting in the general fund, the road fund, the police fund. But the allocation of the interest would change. So as an example, let me just throw a number out because I haven't done any calculations. Let's say the portion that goes to the road that we would allocate was twenty thousand. And you're gonna get more interest from the time we allocate that.
Because we go to the road department and not instead of the general.
And the general fund would get a little, little less interest, but the township in total will get the same interest no matter what.
And day one's fine, by the way. Now that works now.
That's a good question, though. Yeah.
So basically, we're going to go to a hundred percent, but we're still going to take the percentages from the road trash and police departments. And then partway through the re, the, the year, we will reimburse them. Is that what the plan is?
And we can reimburse anytime during the year.
For day one.
January meeting, December meeting. You, and, and if you decide throughout the year, you don't want to do it at all, it's only in the budget.
I guess, what's, what's the advantage of doing it that way versus just then giving us a hundred percent and not taking any percentages from those funds?
Well, not, not to try to paraphrase Mr. Stubbs or Mr. Keener, but, uh, it, it doesn't set a precedent for future years. I think that's really what I heard both of them saying.
It leaves the mechanism in place.
Yeah, to, to take, allocate those percentages from both.
And also, if you're not allocating to the road and the police department, then you can't really say, well, we're not allocating to them anymore, but we're getting that little bit of money, you know, from the trash fund, you know, to allocate money over there because the trash fund, I mean, there's nothing we can do with it except pay rumpie and allocate a few expenses. My, my feeling is if you're not allocating to road and police, then you can't allocate that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. How would you justify that?
I think ten percent of Mr. Easton's salary.
Ten percent of mine, too.
Well, the trash fund balance, just for discussion purposes, is going to drop.
Right.
For a couple of reasons next year. And so I'm estimating at this point, the trash fund ending balance at the end of next year is going to be seventy-seven thousand, which is down significantly where from a hundred and sixty-four at the beginning of this year.
Are we not billing as much as we're being billed by them?
Well, we're not changing our billing rate. Rumpie continues to increase their rate and our personnel costs are going up in the trash area.
So that's something we need to consider as well as.
Next year.
Yes, I'm, if you're gonna allocate to two, we should allocate to all three.
Okay, I, I have no problem with that now that I understand.
And I, I think we need to look into trash rates going up next year, too, as, because we've, we've not increased for several years, several years. We've let that go by. Um, and we've, we've taken the hit at the township and not passed that along.
Because it had a strong balance.
Because it had a strong balance. Yeah, absolutely. So we need to get ourselves back in a strong financial situation there and consider increasing, um, the rumpie rates as, as they're gonna increase, I believe by three percent again come first of the year.
Yeah, I think it's one of you guys.
And at some point, I won't have enough funds to pay the quarterly.
Right.
If, if the ending balance at the end of the year drops, probably at the end of twenty-twenty-four with nothing changing, I won't have enough to be able to pay the first quarter bill when it comes in.
Gotcha.
So, if I understand correctly, both of you are in agreement, we'll go to a hundred percent trustee salaries. We'll continue the allocation and I'll calculate a transfer amount that we'll put into the three budgets.
Right, yep.
I know that was a long, complicated discussion, but it'll certainly help us on the night that we do our budget review. So, all works cheap, I will calculate it. I will let you know, probably send you a new spreadsheet with that number in there. Okay, let's move on. Pool levy time. We, we talked last month. I'll just remind everyone online in the room, the pool levy will expire at the end of twenty-twenty-three. The levy was last passed as a renewal in May of two thousand eighteen. Last month, Mr. Stubbs, you agreed to talk to the pool board and pool oversight committee at the next meeting about the levy. I understand council discussed it last, at their meeting last Monday night. If we want to put the levy on the May twenty-three ballot, the deadline to submit it to the Board of Elections is February first. And it's a two-step process to get us to that point. The first step is to ask the auditor, Montgomery County Auditor, to certify the amount. It would be generated by either a renewal or replacement, or if you want to ask for both. And then we get that information back from them within about ten days. And then at our next meeting after that, you can then authorize placing the levy on the ballot. So tonight, if you're ready to start step one, I've given you the language for the resolution.
And the, after discussion with the pool board, they've asked that we, um, ask for both. Um, and they would like to make a decision after we know the difference between a replacement and a renewal. So the other question that was brought up was the, uh, going on the May ballot. Or is it March or May for Ohio? It is May, okay. So if it goes on the May ballot, is there gonna be anything else on for our area, hopefully a, a judge primary, but, um.
That'll be Miami's burdened.
But we're included in that.
Yeah, we are included in that, oh, okay.
So, um, but our, our fear was that if, if we're one of the only things on there, there's gonna be an increased cost to us to run it. So at this point, we would like to, to ask for the value of each, uh, replacement and a renewal at the current, uh, replace at the current level, um, and then make our decision from there. So, resolution number forty-one.
Hold on, I got some more discussion.
Okay, sure.
Because they, they did discuss at the, uh, German Town Board meeting or council meeting Monday. They said that a renewal would generate eighty-four thousand dollars, the replacement would generate a hundred and twelve thousand. I, I don't know if those are, if that's just what they.
That information has not been shared with me, so. Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if that, that was during their work session, so I don't know if that was any correct. I did talk to the Board of Elections last Monday, maybe. So the, if, if nothing else is on the ballot in Germantown, Germantownship, the probable cost to us is gonna be forty-five hundred dollars. He came out with nine hundred.
For all five?
That's the price, nine hundred dollars a precinct.
Nine hundred, yeah.
That's what, I thought that was a little higher the last time we checked, but that's what Dave said it was gonna be, nine hundred dollars. So, so again, um, we, we know for sure in the, the November ballot, there'll be some issues because you will be up for reelection and we will be up for reelection. So, um, that's, that's the question is, do we want to pay, possibly have to pay? Entire election.
For some reason, we were thinking fifteen hundred for a precinct.
Yeah, it's, I thought it was higher, but it, yeah.
So we were, we had discussed the possibility of it being seventy-five hundred dollars. So the fact there were three thousand less than that is good. So I, I would assume with the lower rate and potentially a primary, uh, that would help offset that, that we will probably run it in this, in the spring, um, whichever, whichever way the board chooses to go.
Again, the only real reason to do it in the spring, if it fails, you have another chance to pass it.
Yeah, because if we don't do it in the spring and it fails in November, we're, we will not be able to collect for
A full year.
A full year.
You'll lose a full year. You'll, we'll have to rely on the fund balance and whatever Germantown has on their end and their fund balance.
Right, so that's what we, that's, that's the predicament we're kind of in, is if we run it in the spring, if we don't run it in the spring and for whatever reason fail it in the, in November. And, and also just this kind of hit me, when you, when you think of a pool in the spring, that's when you're looking forward to a pool. Um, and I think people may be more in, in, uh, yeah, to vote for, inclined to vote for it. November, the pool's closed, you can't go to a pool for, people don't care. It's out of sight, out of sight, out of mind for six months, so, um, my anticipation is that we will run it in the, in May.
And that's, that's the impression I got, again, attending the, uh, the Germantown Council meeting. Who was there too, unfortunately can't, can't back me up on that, but I think they wanted to run it in May also.
Okay.
I think we should start tonight.
Yeah.
Then in January, you can make your decision. And we'll have the answer back, assuming even with the holidays, it's, I think they're required to do it within ten days. So we should have the answer back before Christmas. Jake, uh, Mr. Stubbs, sorry, would there be a, um, pool meeting possibly before our January meeting?
Uh, we can make it so there is one.
I think that would be helpful because you can't wait for our, it's February meeting.
Right, it could be too late. Yep, absolutely. I'll make a note of that.
So are you thinking half mil you want to request and then both repla, replacement and renewal?
Yeah, so we're keeping the, the mil is the same. We're, we just wanted to request the, the, uh, the amounts for both.
And, and we can do that. And so you'll choose, when you read through this, you'll choose the May second and you'll do both renewal and replacement. And again, we'll make that resolution forty-four. And I would think we'll stick with a five-year. I don't like the fact that it's five years because every other levy renewal, it ends up like this, a year where there's hardly anything. I, I don't know whether, not for this one, but maybe for some future levies, we may want to think about four-year levies.
Okay.
Which they always then would end up in a primary year, either off, off, uh, midterm or presidential. But that's something that you can think about.
Mark, you have.
I actually got a question. I don't know the answer to this, Mr. Easton. You may or may not, is there a reason that we couldn't at some point, let's say we pass this five-year levy, and in two years from now, go ahead and do a replacement for a continuing period of time, despite the police levy as a continued period of time?
I think that is not one of the levies that's allowed to be.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Is it only like public service levies that are allowed?
I believe that's the case, but I, I, I hate to say definitively because I've not researched it, but I think that is the situation.
Because our fire, fire AMS levies are also.
Right.
Okay. That would make sense.
Public service versus recreational.
Right. I'll try and stay quiet for.
All right, ready to make a resolution?
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-four, a resolution requesting that the Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify to Germantownship the total current tax valuation of Germantownship Incorporated in unincorporated areas and the, and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a recreational levy for the pool, a, is it? Point five.
Yes.
Point five mil levy for five-year period of time, um, of, for both the renewal and a replacement, beginning the tax year twenty-twenty-three with the first half collection in twenty-four to provide funding for the Parks and Recreational Purposes Swimming Pool as authorized in the O R C section five seven zero five point one nine H to be voted on, um, on the May second primary ballot.
So a second to resolution twenty twenty-two forty-four.
I will second that.
Thank you. Kind of tough with only two of you tonight.
Yeah.
It's no, no problem seconding.
One, one thing that just occurred to me as you were reading that, Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
I know I have to send them the resolution for them to do this. I don't know whether they will insist on two resolutions or whether they will allow me to do one.
So do you want to do them separate?
To be safe, probably.
All right, so I'm gonna amend the one I just said to, uh, read to be a point five mil levy for five years, a renewal, on the May second ballot.
And will you agree to that amendment?
Yes, Dr. Cross.
Okay, and then we'll just do it all over again with replacement?
Yes.
And I, I may be belt suspenders on that one, but I don't want to get us caught.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any, any more discussion on resolution twenty twenty-two forty-four? Now I'll call the roll, Dr. Cross.
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two forty-four is adopted. Now this will be forty-five.
All right, I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-five, but you want me to read the whole thing again?
No.
Okay, uh, point five mil levy, point five mil levy, um, replacement, beginning tax year twenty-twenty-three on the May ballot.
For a second?
Second, yes, here.
Any discussion? Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-two forty-five is adopted. Okay.
And I want to make sure that everybody online in here, it's one or the other. It won't be both. So just so we're clear, uh, it will not be both. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, I attended the Auditor of State's Uniform Accounting Network, what we know as U A N. Their Year End Update Webinar, um, on December fifth, that was an all-day webinar. And this Thursday morning, I'm going to be attending Montgomery County Auditor's Annual Update at Sinclair Community College. That's just an hour, hour and a half in person. Or is anyone else in the township going Thursday? Okay, I'll be, I'll report back next, next meeting. All right. Every year, the trustees appoint the members of the Reserve Police Officer Memorial Fund Board for the following year. Uh, the last year we did it in December. I think that's a great time to do that. Uh, you will use a resolution to do that. Just for reference, this year's board members, uh, Lynn Cleveland is the citizen representative and the chair. Lou Potter is the elected official representative. I'm the second elected official representative and also secretary. Josh Nichols is the Reserve Officer Representative and Muyad Shokei is the second Reserve Officer Representative. And you may want to make some changes for next year.
I would like to make some changes. I would, if, if Mr. Keener is willing to be the citizen representative and chair.
It would be honored.
Okay.
I would change the Reserve Officers to Muyad Shokei, Adam Gabeer, as Josh Nichols is now a full-time employee.
So if someone would like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-two forty-six, uh, with those two changes.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-six, a resolution appointing the twenty twenty-three Reserve Police Officer Memorial Fund Board as follows, Mark Keener, citizen representative and chair, Lou Potter, elected official representative, Mark Easton, elected official representative and secretary, Adam Gabir, Reserve Officer Representative, and Muyad Shokei, uh, Reserve Officer Representative.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of the resolution?
Thanks, Mr. Keener.
If, no, no further discussion. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-six is adopted. All right. We, of course, as you know, are a member of our insurance company, O T R M A, otherwise known as Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority. And as a member, we are allowed to help elect the O T R M A Board of Directors. An election occurs every two years. I sent you the ballot for this year's election. Three candidates are running for two positions. Two of the candidates are incumbents. And just as a reference back, the last time we did this in twenty-twenty-one, the trustees decided not to submit an election ballot. So what would be your pleasure for this year?
I would do the same thing.
Yeah, same.
Because we, I.
We will not submit a ballot. Last month, Mr. Stubbs talked about, mentioned Trabel, made a presentation several years ago to the trustees concerning electric aggregation. Coincidentally, just a few days later, the township received a packet of information from Trabel. And I provided that information to you, not to, for any action tonight, but just so you can consider it along with the information that Philip Leffler gave you when he attended back in September to discuss the electric aggregator, S O P E C. And I was curious that it happened within days of our. And I was curious that it happened within days of our last meeting.
So I would just add to that, I had a discussion with John Thebert from Aspen Energy on twelve-twenty, oh, two-twenty-two. And he represents a consulting firm that manages electric and gas aggregation. So the earliest we could, we could put that in the ballot would be November, because there's so many, there's public meetings that are involved, but there was no way we could do it for, for the May. I think what I would, what I would kind of maybe recommend is that we possibly have a, a representative from Trabel.
Trabel, yeah.
Talked to the board at the January, the February meeting, kind of get a bit different perspective versus Philip Lepa's company. People, when you look at their information, I mean, it sounds great, they really do pretty much all the work for you. They're obviously, and for them, they get a sort of subsidy from the electric company. They choose for, we choose for them. I still think it's, it's a good thing to do because rates are only going to go up and rates at A D S is going to go up probably, even I think is when it's rate increases scheduled, so.
Yeah, and I know Trabel's at the O T A.
Oh.
Every year, they're one of the major, uh, sponsors, I believe. So they'll have a booth there that, that anybody that goes should be able to stop and talk to and ask questions. But I, I agree, if this is something we want to do first of the year, let's, let's see if we can get, I remember the guy's name from Trabel that came here before. Uh, it wasn't the guy's name that was on that card. But, uh, see if they're interested in coming back and. I believe, I think they have, is it Clay Township locally that is with Trabel, I believe, so.
Yeah, if we could, one, we can talk to them and find out, just get a basically a reference to see. But I think, again, I, I, I don't know why it didn't pass, failed by seventeen votes back in two thousand and three. I don't know why that happened, whether people thought that was too much government intervention, but, you know, when you can save, it, it seems like the, the electric aggregation is saving most municipalities or townships thirty percent on their electric bill. You know, and it, it's a situation where you can opt out on it, there's no, uh, there's no penalty if you opt out. Want to try to get your on your own, you can go to the, the website and pick fifty different electric items, but I think something we should proceed next year.
Okay, yeah.
Good start, we'll talk to him. Maybe have him here and I'll, I can call the guy, and maybe I'm here for the January regular meeting and talk to him at the. The O T A, yeah, so.
Very good. Uh, the last item on my report, I think I will defer to Mr. Holberg when he gets to finish his report. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mark. Police Department report? Wake up chief.
We had pancakes with Santa two Saturdays ago, December third. We had about eighty-five children and I believe it was a success. I want to thank all those that came and all those that helped.
My family enjoyed it immensely, thank you very much for hosting us. My grandson was not real comfortable on Santa's lap, but it was his first time ever.
And that concludes my report.
Jeremy, Road Department, you're.
Uh, just like to report to the board that, uh, Scott and I completed the township-wide tree trimming along all the roads maintained by German Township. And to remind everyone in the township, if you don't want us cutting like, um, for, uh, plumber, then they're more than welcome to keep their trees trimmed back off right away. Um, the second item, I think, is what Mr. Easton alluded to. Eckhart Road property sale. Back in twenty-fifteen, when German Township moved Eckhart Road to correct a series of ninety-degree turns, dangerous, uh, side distance turns. Excuse me. We purchased land from, uh, Mr. Fred Glander to sweep out that, those two curves. And basically that, when it was all said and done and the right of way had been moved, it left us with a triangle of property. That was of no use to German Township. Uh, so we vacated that piece of property and put it for sale on gov deals because that was one of the only legal ways we could dispose of it. Um, it ran on gov deals for a set amount of time and really the only person that it was worth anything to was Mr. Scott Wydell. Uh, because it invited his property, so Mr. Wydell, uh, bid on it and was the winning bidder. And he paid gov deal's price for it and nobody said another word about it. So I got a call, oh, about a month ago now, from somebody at Wydells that said they were viewing the tax. People get, German Township was still listed as the registered owner of that angular half acre. Even though Mr. Wydell had already paid for it seven years ago.
And we've been bank taxes on it.
Exactly, so, uh, what had happened was, nobody did the title work. Whose fault was that? It doesn't really matter. It doesn't really matter. So I reached out to Victoria Watson, who's in the Real Estate Department of Montgomery County Engineers Office. And after finding a legal description that, uh, our engineering firm had wrote out for that specific reason to sell the piece of property. Uh, we had that, which made her less excited about the whole situation, she was very excited when I first approached this whole thing to her. And the other thing we had was the vacation. So after having those two items ironed out, then we, you know, we had done that back in twenty-fifteen. She said, oh, well, you know, this is simple, it's having the prosecutor's office draft a quick claim deed. Uh, have the board pass a resolution, have board members sign the quick claim deed. And then, not sure if we file that or if Scott files it. Or Mr. Wydell, but anyways, somebody files it with the, uh, Real Estate Department of Montgomery County and then it sits. So, but that being said, we have the, uh, resolution that you print that out by chance.
Yeah.
I, I will have to print it again because we don't, didn't know the number.
Okay.
And I will, after this meeting, I will print it out on.
I'd like to have two copies of that, if I could, sign copies.
Will we need Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Potter's signature?
Since he's not here for the resolution. We cannot sign the quick claim deed tonight because we don't have a, uh, it has to be. We don't have a notary.
Right.
So at some point, which, White Corporation, they said, you know, this whole time I, you know, apologizing to them, I don't know why this all got dropped, you know, we'll see what we can do, should I schedule a special meeting? No, no, we've been this long, don't, you know, we can wait. And they were very gracious to, you know, ride to the normal meeting. So, um, my suggestion is, is pass the resolution tonight and then have board members stop in and see Shawna, because she's a notary. And, yes, yeah.
I didn't know that.
And she can notarize their signatures individually at some point, so.
I've given copies to both Dr. Cross and Mr. Stubbs. So we'll actually have numerous copies, each one notarized separately. Question in my mind, though, is what do we do with our third trustee? Since he is absent tonight, he can't vote on this resolution. And he probably. I think he, but should he sign the quick claim deed? Even if he wasn't here for the vote?
Well, if the resolution passed, passes, I don't see why.
That would, if he signed it, that would indicate that he was in agreement with it, I guess.
So, or do we wait another month? But even if you voted no, it still passed.
We can also put it on the year-end.
Yeah.
Meeting. We are allowed to do anything that I announce ahead of time, and I can certainly put this in the, um, public notice of the year-end meeting, that we will deal with this.
What is, what is the? Lack of better term, the downfall of just having two signatures on the quick claim?
Don't know.
Because I've never heard anybody say, you know. Nobody brought that up in any discussion I had with Victoria Watson or, uh, I knew.
Well, and at the advantage, if we do it at the year-end meeting and Shawna's here, we can, she can notarize everything with three of us.
Yeah, you're only talking another.
Two, three weeks. Why don't we do it that way? We'll introduce the resolution at that time and then vote on it and.
I think that would be, we wouldn't have any worries.
That'd be cleaner way.
Probably cleaner, yeah.
I guess, as far as the resolution is, this is the quick claim deed, but isn't, is there a separate resolution in here somewhere or that we would actually make the resolution to?
I sent you the resolution, I did not give you a copy to know, that I did send it to you with my packet.
Okay, I didn't realize, I thought they were kind of both the same as this, the quick claim deed.
There were two different documents. But I will send them again.
I, I appreciate.
Because you'll need it for the.
Yeah, because it'll be changed.
And I will announce this as one of the purposes of our year-end meeting.
The only other thing I had was, uh, obviously, when I set out my, uh, meeting notes, I attached a draft twenty-twenty-three Ruin Service Department budget. Uh, for your initial review. And I know we're going to be talking at the December meeting about the twenty-twenty-three, uh, cola. For the German Township employees, so I did attach, um, some calculations on how the different percentages would affect the road budget, excuse me, for your review. Other than that, the only other thing I want to report is. That's all I, if I think, if I think, if I think.
Let us know.
Yeah, I guess, oh, thank you.
Okay. Since Shawna isn't here, I, I'll go ahead and kind of do a zoning department report. We had a zoning violation on A B Road, it was actually, uh, two recreational vehicles parked, one was in the front yard, one of this is, it's in the side yard. So we sent them a letter and they actually corrected it.
Really?
I, I think the goal is, and I talked to Shawna, we'll try to, th- those, those letters, the violation letters that we sent out, we'll try to standardize this, because, but what I did, I made it up and I kind of went from a clay township letter that they, we had headed me. The office went by that, and it was very straightforward, this is what the violations are, this is what you need to do, period, it wasn't, you know, this is what you should do, we'd like to see you do this, it was this. And, and again, in that case, it, it worked out perfectly, so. The Shawna and Kristen and I met with, uh, was Stefan Brydenbaugh. And was water management technician Ed Everman from the District Director for the, for the Montgomery County Soil and Water Conference Conservation District on November sixteenth. And the purpose of the meeting was to get information about how the Conservation District could help our zoning departments approach certain zoning issues. The highlight, basically discuss using the web soil survey to determine, determine if a certain parcel contains prime agricultural soil. Mistress Brydenbaugh set it up a meeting with Mrs. Close and Mrs. Hammacher to get instructions on using the site, and that's supposed to be this Wednesday, I hope Shawna's feeling. They discussed the need to include information on ponds in the zoning resolution, and they said we really should do that because it can be a contentious issue. Uh, we had a discussion on determining if a parcel is in the flood plain, we had a long discussion pertaining to drainage issues on the properties. And, uh, again, they're going to, this, Mr. Brydenbaugh suggested that he meet with Mrs. Close and Mrs. Hammacher in twenty-twenty-three to discuss draining issues. And try to resolve these issues as they arise, as they can be quite complex, and that basically refers to B C A cases. So did I handle on that? And they said that they, the Miami Soil and Water Conservancy District, Conservation District can supply specific information about drainage and pond issues. If questions arise in the township and we can reach out to them many times, so basically, it's a resource, I don't think that we, the zoning department has really ever taken advantage of, these guys are willing to bend over backwards to help us in issues. Because there's a, the current B C A case that's going to be, uh, held, I think, on the tenth of January, continued as, as, as a big drainage issue. So there, there again, they're certainly valuable and we should use that, use that.
Can I take a copy of the email?
You can, yes.
Thank you.
So again, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Valerie Hill to another five-year term on the B C A, and her term will be one-one-twenty-three to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion?
She does a great job, so happy that she's coming.
I was thrilled to just. I pled with her for coming.
She has a lot of knowledge of the, of zoning and so it's definitely good to have her.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kurt DeKobe to another five-year term on the zoning commission, again, the term will be one-one-twenty-three to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion?
Kurt is happy to serve again, hopefully he will serve again as president next year, so.
He also does a fantastic job, we're lucky to have him.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Thank you.
And I'm still working to getting Shawna Close listed as an associate member of the Ohio Township Association, I talked to Jake about this earlier. It's like pulling teeth, basically, any, any changes in the membership, uh, have to go through Harrison Township, they're our, our representative for Montgomery County. So, and so basically, I've talked to the, uh, Ohio Township Association Administrative Assistant up there to see, have they upgraded it yet? No, no. Shonda Hill, I guess, is Administrative Assistant in, uh, Harrison Township. I've reached out to her the first time, she said, okay, it'll get done. That was three weeks ago, so I finally reached out to her again, I said, it's basically that idea, we're trying, Shawna is, is planning on going to the Ohio Township Association Conference. If she's listed as a member of the township, which you've already paid for, for twenty-twenty-two, she can get the member discount, just fifty dollars off, so, so it's not, it's a few dollars, I would say. So the worst-case scenario, she can register as a non-member, we just have to pay. So, but I'm trying, so, all it is, is a matter of Harrison Township emailing the A D S, saying, this is the updated meeting, exactly what we need. To replace Valerie Hill or, either Valerie Hill or Haley's still on there, just replace with, with Shawna, so.
Valerie is what they show.
Yeah.
And Haley was able to register last year, even though she wasn't shown as a member. Oh, I don't know.
Mark. I, I just can't stay quiet tonight. As you're talking about the O T A conference, something just popped into my head. Part of our cost-cutting measures back in twenty-seventeen were to require that if elected officials went to the O T A conference, the township would only pay for the cost of the conference itself. And no travel, lodging, or anything. I, I'd hate to throw Mr. Easton all of a sudden, something he's not expecting, but do you think you've got enough money in the general fund now to, to cover the elected officials' travel and lodging and fuel costs while they're up? That's fairly significant out of pocket for them. Hell, now it's running. Forty bucks a night.
Hundred and eighty.
Yeah, we're just selling. That's history.
So. Uh, I have no problem paying, paying my way, I mean, I, I, you know, it's my decision to go, so I, I really hate to have the township pay for that. I don't even ask for the membership.
But, you know, poor Jake is just.
Lou, he usually goes one day, so usually, he doesn't usually stay overnight, so, yeah, so it's not as big a deal.
Really? I guess, to answer your question, the answer is, if that's what the trustees want, there is sufficient funds. If we can talk about a much bigger issue of allocating salaries and so forth, we can handle this.
Right.
It's a question of what they wish to have happen. And, and I don't think I have paid, reimbursed anybody for O T A expenses since I started, except for the zoning inspector.
Right. Well, that's.
That was a big.
The road department, when they give up, I mean, they just put it all on their credit card with their fees, and they don't stay overnight, they just go up for a day.
I don't think you've gone up in the two years since I came.
We usually go up unless it snows that day, that's the reason, that's the only reason we never pre-register.
And I know it snowed because I drove to and from on that snow day both years.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I mean, I, we could, I guess, have the option if, you know, they, they paid for it, if, if the elected official requests that.
I would, I think with, if we're increasing the salary back, I'm, that'll help cover part of that.
Yeah.
So. But I appreciate that.
Appreciate the thought, Mark.
Yeah.
Or, you know, recognize their service.
Okie dokie, I think that's it as far as the zoning reports, if I can. We did, we have had several, uh. We have had several solar mounted, you know, roof-mounted solar installations, at least acquired. Surprising, it's probably five or six in the last two. That's great. Uh, moving on to trustee reports, Mr. Stubbs.
All right, just a few things tonight. Cemetery. We have posted, Mark Sineker's position, the Sexton job has been posted on the township website, on the city website, and I believe it still needs to go out in the press. We've received several resumes from, from people in and around our community. And we have several good ones so far and appears to choose from when we get to that part. We, we are, we'll be sending out letters this week to let all the people that submitted resumes know that we've received the resume and then they will be hearing from us first of, first of the year as we move forward in the process to, to hire his replacement. Unfortunately, Shawna looked into the insurance issue we're having with the new hire. And the township cannot offer insurance because it is a, the cemetery has its own tax ID, which from the same reason Bonnie Kugel had checked with the city and they cannot provide insurance for the exact same reason, because they checked and you have, it's because it's a different tax ID. So we're going to have to come up with a, a plan at the cemetery, which is going to cost us some more money. But whatever it is, it is.
You can certainly reimburse the Sexton for.
Right. And that's.
And depending on the coverage they choose, and you can probably tell them how much you'll reimburse.
Right.
It may not cost that much more than what we're currently here.
Gotcha. So that's a, that's something we're going to have to look into. Bonnie was unable to come tonight due to illness. So once we get all together, we'll be able to, to discuss this further, but yeah, we're, we're going to have to look into some type of reimbursement for health insurance because we cannot provide it through the township or the city. Uh, so this. Let's go. This Saturday at Germantown Union Cemetery, there will be a where it went in my packet, wreaths across America will be putting wreaths in the cemetery and there will be a, a ceremony at noon. I believe the mayor of Germantown has, has been invited. And Dr. Cross, potentially you were invited as well. No? Okay. They said you had been invited. I. So there is.
It doesn't work anyway, so it doesn't.
Okay. But they will be putting wreaths out. There'll be a ceremony at noon for that. They do a great job. And getting the wreaths out in the cemetery on stands. So it should look pretty nice. Moving on to the pool, unfortunately, we had to meet twice to, to go over our budget and pass it. The, they had, the city of Germantown had created the budget and they had included significant increases to full-time salary, which was eighteen thousand-ish, short of eighteen thousand dollars. Which also, because of that, then became an increased insurance, OPERS and the insurance and all that goes along with that. They also continued their $5,000 administrative charge. So then when, at the first meeting, I asked for justification as why the increases the city provided, provided time sheets from this year, which they kept track of, which included 155 hours of overtime, which I wasn't sure why they were billing us at to the pool. And they, they had claimed that they had 412 hours at $26.90 an hour, coming out at $11,000 for service members, for members of the service department to work at the pool. And then on top of that, you had the pool, Ronnie Saul and her oversight of the pool, she had $6,200. Anyway, long story short, we met a second time after they provided this. And the majority of the board felt that these charges were excessive when the, when the entire levy the pool receives is in the mid eighties, thousands of dollars, and they're charging a significant, significant high salaries. So at the end of the day, we came to the, to an agreement that the full-time wages line would go from $4,490.22 to $10,000.23. And then the city would be adjusting down the OPERS and the other expenses that go along with it based on the $10,000. And that included keeping the, the $5,000 administrative charge. While I wished it was lower, I think this is fair. One of the arguments that was made was that this is a joint pool between the city and the township. At what point is this just day-to-day operations of the city? Because this lies within the city, obviously. So at what point is a serviceman, service department person just doing part of their day-to-day operations? So luckily, we came to the agreement. It's, we saved over $12,000 in, in the adjustment, much to the disappointment of the city. So that, that concluded. That's the new budget should reflect the changes we made when the city does approve it. I would like to thank Tim Johnson for his role on the pool oversight committee. He's been with us for four or five years and he has chosen not to be reappointed. Tim was instrumental in several upgrades, including getting us in contact with Mason City Pools when they did a major renovation. We were able to get some of their old equipment. It was new to us, did, did, and is still doing a, a service to our, our pool. He's a great person. He represented the community well. I mean, he's getting to leave big shoes to fill. He, he was, he thought out, he didn't just go along. He was asking questions and, and willing to stand up for what he believed in, and I appreciated that from him. So on that same note, if anybody's interested in serving on the pool oversight, please reach out and let me know. We already talked about the levy. Last thing I have, we're a year in to the new board, and I'd like to thank Dr. Cross and Mr. Potter for an exceptional year. It's nice to work with a board that puts the interests of the township ahead of themselves. Even in disagreement, we can have conversations like adults and that's, that's new. So I look forward to another year with you guys and the township. Expect great things. And, and Mr. Easton as well. I think we have a good, good group and definitely working in the best interest of the township at this point in time. So that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jake. I appreciate it. I think, again, it's a good group to work with. My, my report, Mark, Mr. Keener, you want to give us a report in the JED?
Now we got to talk again. So still no meeting of the JED board. Emails that I sent out earlier, since the last meeting we had here, have pretty much gone unanswered. So, yeah, just kind of going along. Did get an interesting email from Brenda, the attorney. And so as you're all aware, the terms for first set of board members are all staggered. So the first municipal board member is going to be appointed for one year, the first township board member for two years. Well, it turns out, I never really thought about this, but Mrs. Wamer said those are based on fiscal year. So Mr. Wafzig's term expires 1231 and Farmersville is going to need to appoint somebody to be effective 11. And then my term will be up 1231 of 23 and Jackson will appoint somebody to represent the Jackson Township. So also as a result of that, we will be having to board position elections within our first meeting kind of 2020. I was getting very frustrated. We actually have a check in the amount of forty-two hundred dollars, I think, somewhere around $4,000, our first check from Valley View for the withholding at the high school. We have nowhere to deposit that because we don't have any bank accounts set up because we need resolutions from the board to set up bank accounts. And there's been no meetings since the initial meeting we had here back in August. I was getting ready to send out something a little scathing that says, we're going to have a board meeting on X date. And if I don't get any response, I'm going to recommend to the Germantown Township Board Trustees that Germantown Township just pull out since the board is apparently very apathetic about everything. I think what I'm going to do instead with Mr. Wafzig's upcoming termination from the board, I think I'm just going to suggest that we meet and also include that or Farmersville's new board member. And we meet on January 2nd because everybody should be off work that day anyway. You know, that way nobody has to take off work and we'll come meet and see if we can't have a meeting on July, or on January 2nd, or sometime that first week of January. If we get nowhere, then I actually will come back and support it. And Jane, I recommend that we just pull out. Apparently, this is not the important item that Germantown has been trying to make it out to be for the last three or four years.
So does Jackson, is Jackson Township aware that they're need to?
Yes. So I forwarded this email that Brenda had sent out to Kelly at Farmersville, who forwarded on to at least Nick Lamb. I talked to Mike Moyer today. He actually lives in the village and not that residency is any concern, but he lives in the village. So they may, Farmersville could appoint him. Or Mr. Lamb, and I left Mr. Lamb a voicemail this evening, just letting him know what was going on, that I'm assuming we have. I haven't heard anything back. Yes, they should be aware of it.
Hopefully they'll do that this month.
Well, and that's why I think their meeting, I might be tonight anyway. So that's why I went ahead and left a message with Mr. Lamb.
So again, just, and you, you heard some, Deb worked the Christmas chop, Christmas chop at the elementary. I guess there has been some pushback from some of the teachers at the high school now that they're getting money taken out. Now they're realizing, hey, this maybe wasn't such a great, it's like, where were you when you were in front of the school board?
It was a crazy guy that was in front of the board saying, this is not a good thing because we're taking.
David, you're, no, nothing good to say.
It's good or not.
So do the JED board bylaws, and I haven't read them in a long time. Do they allow any member of the board to call a meeting or is it only the chair?
Well, I, I don't know if any member of the board, but I have sent out you know, saying, hey, we need to meet. We got to have, you know, we don't have bank accounts. We got to have this. Mr. Stivers had volunteered at the first meeting back in August to look into insurance coverage for the board. We have nothing. I said in one of the emails, I'm not real crazy about serving this without, you know, some sort of liability coverage. So, yeah, we have none of that. Oh, hey, can we meet? You know, I'd actually suggested, can we meet sometime the week of December 5th? Nobody except Kelly, who's not actually on the board, replied. So.
Again, just at, at the Germantown Council meeting, Mr. Wafzig had a, basically a report on the JED and he didn't say anything about him being off the board. So that was kind of a surprise, but but it sounds like kind of a mess.
It is kind of a mess, yeah.
You're going to, going to have the JED, you need to actually have run the JED.
Yes. So one thing I do need to do myself is I need to get ahold of the somebody at the auditor's office. I'll probably call Sylvia Reed, who did the audit. Well, she's part of the audit team when I was up here at one time. So I'll probably call her if I've got questions. You know, we may or may not even have to do any sort of report. We have constructive receipt of $4,000. How do I report that on financial statement? I have no idea. We've got no outlay. So, yeah, I, I don't have any idea what we even need to do from a reporting standpoint. Lots of fun. Thanks for getting me into this.
Thank you, Mr. Keener, for your service. David, go ahead.
David Goron, 14239 Kefir Road. A question for you is, at the last meeting, there was an agreement that you would work with the young lady that from Farmersville is going to do that to set up accounts. Did that not take place?
We can't set up accounts because we don't have resolutions saying, authorizing the board to go in. So that was supposed to take place in our next meeting. And we haven't had another meeting, except for the one you went to at school.
Okay. The second question goes to the same thing Mark alluded to. In the bylaws or resolutions, is any, is there any language that you know of having to do with absenteeism or lack of participation?
That I don't know, and that is something I will certainly look at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I'll continue to finish up with my report. I guess the question for the chief, has the, have the new replacement sections for the personnel manual for section 4.1, 4.2-2A, 4.2-3A, and 4.4 been added to the personnel manual? Have you had any?
Oh, let me answer that if I may, rather than the chief.
Okay.
Because I really think that's probably something that I need to do because it affects the whole township. And I started working on it. And then I saw that the copy I have in my office does not match the digital copy. So I was going to reach out to Shawna, which I haven't done, to see, to get a, one of the copies from your office. Maybe a copy from your office too, Mr. Ober. Because somewhere there was an official copy and I presumed that the digital copy was the official one. But my copy has things that aren't in there. So.
Lori was kind of the keeper of most up-to-date version. And, you know, I don't know if any changes have been made such Shawna, I mean, other than the ones you're speaking of have been made in her tenure. So if I think she has the latest version. So.
And the digital copy I have actually came from Shawna, which I'm sure was from Lori's files. So I'm presuming that is the most accurate. But I do want to compare it to a hard copy. So if, if you can loan me one.
I, I know mine's totally outdated.
Okay, then don't loan me that, if you could. And I'll, if, if you don't think about that, yes, I would like to look at a hard copy.
I know that the personnel manual is our chapter 3D, our policy and procedure manual.
Okay.
So we should have a hard copy.
Okay.
In that particular man. That would have been kept up to date by challenge predecessor.
Now whether I get that done before year end with all, everything else we're doing, it may slip in the next year.
Wondering whether it's going to be.
When I realized this is a bigger project than just updating a few small changes, I thought, I don't quite at this point have that time available. So I'll get to it as quickly as possible.
I think the actual hard copy's in the safe.
That safe or the one in my office?
So I'd like to, if we can, set up the board meetings for the trustees for the end of the year meeting. I was 12:30, which was last Friday.
I'm fine with that.
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM is good. I think evenings are better than daytime.
Okay, Jeremy.
Gives us three days to manipulate our budgets.
Now what?
Does that only give us three days to manipulate our budgets?
Well.
Because we'll make a, a decision on cost of living increases at the December meeting.
Why don't we talk about that tonight? I think that's the same.
You want it on getting that?
Absolutely do, and which is the same reason why I wanted to talk about allocation and reductions of trustee salaries. So we wouldn't have to make many changes after.
That was my only concern. And not that I, not that it bothered me to come in on, you know, a Saturday or Sunday and put in a few hours, but that, that's the only downfall of having it on the Friday, the 30th. Because now you're, you've, you've gone all the way up into the, into the new year and weekend and so forth.
I would rather go with the 30th and resolve the issue of COLA tonight. And put it much earlier than that because one of the things we do at the end of the year meeting is approve every appropriation all over again for the year.
Right.
And when we meet on the 30th, I will have every payment made. There will be no more payments made after that meeting. So we know exactly what the appropriations are. If we push it further back.
There could be a, some.
It could be something that's made. And the auditor insists on having a. Having a, a final vote to approve all appropriation, because I make changes. Throughout the year from what was appropriated in January. And so. If we can compromise and talk about COLA tonight, then let's stick with the 30th.
Sure, you, you want to discuss that now? So I, the, you know, the Fire EMS for Germantown, they're getting a 3% raise. Now inflation is higher, but I, I think the 3% raise was given last year, I think a 3% raises.
I, I know you had three, four and five on there and, and uh. Inflation is record high.
8.7?
Yeah.
14.6 over the last two years.
Crazy. Um, three per, obviously you want to do more, but I think 3% is, is. It's reasonable. I, I mean, we could go higher, but it's just going to affect our budget long-term more um to go higher. I think I know, what is your, well, first of all, what is your recommendation based on what you guys have? Do you have a recommendation?
I was kind of surprised. I went over our COLA. Couple months ago. And there's been a lot of times where we didn't take, we didn't have any kind of COLA. There was times where we got 3% or 2% or 1% even. I was surprised that since I've become chief, how close. The, the years that we got 3%, the actual COLA was only 1.2. And how close we were, we're only like a percent off. I think the thing that kills us this year is that in the last two years. The COLA has increased so much, there, you, you have to go back into the early eighties to find a comparison. That being said, I mean. I think that there has. We almost have to give some kind of COLA. I'm not saying the full thing. I'm, I'm not saying 1%, but I'm saying I think there has to be something to help. The employees with kind of prices they're seeing at the stores.
I agree that, you know, that. Even though the Social Security Administration has, you know, set 8.7, whatever it is, as the, you know, COLA rate. I don't think either, neither chief budget nor myself can withstand that, and. So it's, it's trying to find a, a balance of, you know, how much can our budgets afford? To get us closer, uh, you know, what's reasonable. What is the, the board, how does the board feel about it? What does the general public feel? So. You know, like I said, I put three, four, five, and the, the road department is kind of in a unique situation. It's different from the police department because. Their biggest cost is employees. Our biggest cost is road work. So, you know, we can sacrifice some road work to offset the cost of living increase. Now, there again, it's, you know, you have to do something reasonable. You know, you don't just want to empty the coffers and not do any room, just pay your employees some astronomical amount. That, you know, chief's in that position where. His is, is personnel and. You know, what he can afford, I don't know. So.
The more that comes out of salaries from your budget is less from the road.
Less on the ideas.
So you have to, it's, it's a balancing act.
Balancing act. And, you know, plus the, you know, that our healthcare costs, insurance and cost has gone up 4.9%, so consider that together.
Right, and just, just so the people, maybe the people listening, though, there was. When we were trying to pass that road levy, there was three or four years in a row, we took zero. Just because we were trying to get the levy back to show the general public that we were serious about our budget being in a bad way. That we weren't giving any cost of living.
And you took zero some years when the police department answered 3%.
Yeah, you, on your sheet you gave us today, you guys took five years in a row of zero.
So I, I was kind of hoping for four. I'm just throwing that out there. It's up to the board. Yeah, that's the difference. And, you know, we don't have. Be the same. You know, obviously we've made that distinction years ago when we took zero and they took three or, or whatever, but I think. To give a township-wide. Percentage just makes for better work environment and everybody's on the same plane. Yeah, I don't know how chief's budget looks. I haven't, you know, sat down with them. Looked over it.
I, I, I'm simply recommend a 3%, I think that that's a.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We've not gone above three in the last. 12 years that's on here. I know this is extraordinary times, but um, I, I'm comfortable with three. I, I would entertain the idea of four. If, if Lou felt strongly that way, but I'm, I'm good with the 3%.
My concern. Is twofold, and it goes in opposite directions. One. The police unbalance. Drop, it's continuing to drop, although this year it's not going to drop as much as we originally budgeted. As your spending didn't go as high as what you thought. But salaries for this year are actually more than what we originally budgeted. So. I am concerned that, you know, we're getting closer and closer to the need for an additional police levy. And we're hearing that, if you're reading the newspapers, you're hearing that all over the Miami Valley and I'm sure all over the country. On the other hand. Can we keep our, particularly our police officers? Um, going and jumping ship to another department somewhere that is paying higher COLAs? I. And again, I guess I think probably we're not paying market rate anyway. So this, does this put us even further behind market rate? And make it more attractive for another department to steal our best? And then how do you replace them?
Yeah, but I, I, on the other hand, I think our health insurance is such a sweet deal for our employees that not too many. And there are some departments that probably do that.
Is that the case that?
I would say the majority of. Departments make their employees pay something.
Something, and we pay nothing.
And we pay nothing. So yes, that is a, you. When you get a young person that really doesn't understand that. Yeah, they're just looking at how much money am I making?
A single guy.
Yeah, he's going to look at a bigger department. Or uh, a department where they make more money. But the, the wise, the wiser officer is going to look and say, yeah, I'm not making. That what that guy is over there, and I'm not paying for insurance either.
So someone who has a family, wife, children. Where they're going to use more medical than our single young guys do, that's a better, greater benefit to them.
I think all the police officers that I've talked to about it here, they all know. I'm just going off my conversations with some of the officers. They know how sweet this, this deal is. And, you know, I, can I guarantee they're not going to jump ship? No, but. I don't think they're like this young, single person. Decisive person we're talking about. I think they know that what they have here is worth a great deal. Added on to their salary, so. You know, I don't see that happening personally. And that's when we talked about insurance before, I mean. The time will come where employees will probably have to pay for their own, but at that time, we also have to consider increasing their pay. Because you can't just drop it on them. So then where are we going to be at that point?
Trade one line item for another line item at that point.
But the, I mean. And like I said. I think that there should be something, I'm not saying it should be the full 8.7, I'm not saying it should be nothing. It should be somewhere in the middle. Uh, and certainly many times we've gone lower. There's been times where we got more. So we really can't argue either way.
So I, I'm, I'm okay with, with your recommendation. I mean, I think. I think that is reasonable and I think. Unfortunately, that is probably the wise choice. Looking at at least the road budget, because like you said. Any money you save in, in salaries goes, and my department goes directly to.
Ship seal more, more road.
Striking, crack sealing, signs.
So we agree, but.
The difference for us at 3% is about $10,700. Difference from, from here to, I think mine's like.
Next three.
36.
36.
Okay, so you're, you're both able to finish. Your budget for the year-end meeting using a 3%. That's, that makes that meeting so much easier that night.
Now Lou could come with. Some other idea too, and, well, that's a possible, I mean, like, we can't speak for him, of course, so.
But we've got two out of three.
Two out of three, so we've already.
Right.
Unless one of you would change your opinion that night.
I'm just saying, he has a, he has a voice in this too. That's all I'm trying to say.
So are we going back?
This is what? I think you both got the same last year. I think you both got three last year.
Two and 21 and two and 20.
So do we want to again go back with the end of the year meeting at 12, on 12:30, 22 at 7? Friday before?
Yes.
Okay. So the reorg special meeting, uh. I kind of thought we'd go with January 2nd. That is a holiday for you guys. Uh, do you necessarily have to be here for the reorg?
Do I recall that either one of you came?
Yeah, we always come.
For the reorg?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Now Shawna cannot be there that night.
Right. Yeah, Shawna can, so that's hard.
So someone will have to run.
Well, I have kind of got it figured out.
Finally.
Could be either Mr. Hamilton or this is.
Yeah, I mean, if Scott wasn't sick, he, I don't think, I can't speak. I don't think he'd have a problem filling in, but he just was feeling under the weather.
So we want to go for the second at 7:00 PM?
That's Monday, the second.
Monday, the second, because you'll still be off of school.
I have a question. Deb, Ross, 7444, South Skyler, is that going to interfere with the Jed meeting?
That's, I think, what Mr. Houston was just looking at me for. You guys have your meeting here. It's, it's. All scheduled, I'll push the Jed meeting some evening.
Yeah, because the Germantown Council meeting has been rescheduled for the third, usually, so that way you can go to.
Yeah, I need to go to the. 7:00 PM on the second.
7:00 PM on January 2nd. And the regular meetings, uh, that email that I sent you, they, that, that should be, Mark, do you have?
I'm comfortable with it if you want.
Yeah, the only, the only change is on 10:10 is on a Tuesday until Monday.
It's a holiday, yeah.
Because of the holiday. So, um.
And the year end next year, is that the Friday night again? I didn't want.
12:29. I'm assuming it is.
I mean, just quickly.
January 1st will be.
Although we could set that one next year.
Right, yeah, there's no big rush there, yeah, so.
Like, it's all of our monthly meetings set, right?
Yeah, so and then, then the goal, and I'll go, the board zoning appeals, they're, I'm, I'm hoping to have their reorganizational spec- special meeting on the third, which is a, a Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And their regular meetings, again, I've got those listed, so I'll give those all to Shawna, so she can get those out. The only kind of. Problem we have is the zoning commission, their regular meeting and reorganizational meeting would be on the same night as the BZA. So the BZA will have their reorg meeting first, which is going to take 10 minutes. They just have to. Nominate and president, vice president, and then the zoning commission will have, immediately after that, will have their, their reorganizational meeting, plus that's the date of their regular meeting. So if they want to get something done, they can. Their, their next meeting, their quarterly meeting will be before, for 2023. The next one is scheduled for 7:05, 2023, but that, that's a Wednesday due to July 4th holiday, but I'm not sure for Mr. Jacoby is he's going to be there. So the, the zoning commission meetings are still kind of up. As far as, so they were, we, we can set the reorg, reorg meeting for them, their first regular meeting, but the rest of the year, I'm probably here from Kurt, see.
So do you plan to have the trustees approve the meeting schedule for the zoning commission and the BZA? Or have the individual boards approve their meeting schedule?
I don't think as far as the BZ and the zoning commission, I think those boards should, should.
So we will do an official vote at the reorg meeting on our.
On our, I know, yeah.
I'll have that in the plan for that day.
Okay, good, so. Okay, so I think that's, um, and again, my goal is to get the, all these meetings on the webpage, on the Facebook page, the town, the police. And the police and the fiscal officer emails, at least, at least one we can advance, because we've heard people, you know, say, when is this meeting? And then there's nowhere to find it, that's not. And that really, hopefully we can get Shawna to do that, because it should be run one centralized person to get those on the Facebook. So she'll need to, yeah, which is, so both of you together, so we get those, those advertised.
The process for our meetings is I send out the notice and then I ask the chief and Shawana to post it on. Website, Facebook, email it out to their, her list, I guess, is the only list she sent.
Yeah, she, you don't have this. No, I, so she takes care of it.
We used to have a township list when Mrs. Sewell was here, but. That got lost somehow.
So that, that is, I think, if we can do that with the board of zoning appeals and the zoning commission. Talk to Shawna about that, because she can initiate those, getting those meetings on. Facebook page plus. Or, or she can.
I can do it too.
So. So the, the shared levy, we, we're going to spend some time talking about the shared levy income and all the problems. I mean, is, is one solution next year when this, all these, before the oversight committees meet? Make sure that we get copies of those budgets like a week or two in advance, so we can look at them?
I, I think unfortunately, I think we're working to the point where we probably need to sit down with them in a joint meeting. I think we're so far off when we get to these budget meetings. At least myself and the, and then the representative from council uh on the pool, pool oversight. Um, we're so far off on what we think the end goal should be. It, it's just, it's hard, hard to get to, get to a solution. So I, I think maybe sometime next summer, maybe we get together uh with a joint meeting with the, with the city of Germantown. Um, and, and talk through some of these issues that we have. Um, whether it be the amount of money we hold back, hold back and don't spend, by the way. Or, or the administrative fees they're charging, you know, for me this year. The pool was such a, such a drastic increase that they had come up with, it just, it doesn't seem right. So I think, I think we're in two different universes. I think at some point we're going to have to sit down. And discuss as boards what the end goal of these should be, so. I mean, if they give us to us a month in advance, I guess we could, if we had a trustee meeting before we have to go, so we could talk about this as a group. Or, or meet sometime with them. We haven't had a joint meeting in a while, so.
It just seems like they're, they're trying to shore up their general fund by taking money from the pool fund, from the senior citizens fund.
Yeah, absolutely, and I would say if I was in, in their position, I'd be arguing the same thing as, that they are. But from our perspective, as a representative of the Township Residents Incorporated and Unincorporated. Uh, it's my position that when you vote on a levy, whether it be for the pool, the park, senior, fire, whatever. It needs to stay and go towards those, those specific purposes.
Not to pay a salary.
Not to pay the salaries of the administrators and, and the, the employees of the city. Um, while at the same time, I do understand that they do put in work. Um, for those levies, I just think we're, we've reached a point where um, it, it's significantly too much.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
Plus the original idea, what they stated at a joint meeting. So the admin fees were to cover salaries. Now they're still charging admin fees and allocating salaries.
Correct.
They're, they're basically double dipping for what they said.
Yeah, I think, I think we're far off on that, and I think that's not. Yeah, I think I think we're far off on that, and I think that's not, that's probably not good.
I attended the twelve five Germantown Council meeting last Monday, so the highlights were the new water tower is online. The old tower has not yet been demolished. An ordinance was passed establishing a community reinvestment area in the city, designating a housing of uh off officer to administer the program. And creating a community reinvestment housing council and a tax incentive review council. So they're putting this, basically, it's giving uh. Tax abatements to properties within the downtown that want to improve that property or something. They're creating a whole other bureaucracy too. So I don't know how they're going to get people to to be on that, so. Anyway, uh, they did approve an ordinance ordinance to transfer a hundred twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to three funds to avoid them ending the year in the red. They advanced fifty thousand dollars to the street levy fund, twenty thousand dollars to the park levy fund, and fifty thousand dollars to the street capital fund. So all three of those funds were going to end up in the red, so they had to dip into the general fund, so that tells you something. And the council went into a work session where discussions concerned plans for the Miami. Miami Oriole, M M I was.
Military.
Military.
And Miami military property, and it basically will be be developed in four four phases, and Mr. Potter was there to listen to that. Really, uh, they did give some some credit to Mr. Potter, but he really did all the work to get that that property. So I think he really deserves more credit than than he was given at the meeting, so. The discussion, they discussed the problem with vehicle noise speeding on Market Street. Yes, that happens. After a lot of back and forth, it was decided to have the city manager determine that the cost of hiring, determine the cost of hiring a traffic engineer for possible solutions. Possible cost to hire the the traffic engineers, three to five, three thousand, ten thousand dollars. The manager stated that they were very limited funds. So I mean, it was twenty minutes of back and forth, and the man, the city manager just said, just tell me something that I can, what what do you want me to do? And that was pretty much what they. Uh, but they, it sounds like they really don't have a lot of money to address the problem, whether that be, you know, increase lease. Place park, like exposure there to to decrease or some sort of signage or something, but. I I don't live on Market Street, so I don't.
It doesn't, they're not talking by part of Mark. They're really talking the area where Mrs. Kugel lives. When Mr. Kugel was alive, it was a problem that he continued to complain about. It's speeding, and it's also uh the mufflers and handbraking of the trucks. At that traffic light, it's very noisy and affects her, which I understand.
So that that, there are, there are some, I guess, there are kind of tried to uh. Reach that problem. That is really all I have. Chief, thanks again for the say no that I think, well, it kind of came in in in.
It wasn't all at once.
Wasn't all. I feel good tonight, I'll dress it out here. Took a load of pancakes with him. Do we have any old business? New business?
I think, let me bring up something for the budget meeting tonight. Um, we talked several times tonight about inflation and the crazy, crazy times we're living in. I think it would be appropriate um for next year to um increase the amount of money that we put um from the FALT fund. Potentially to sunshine in a bag. So I would like to consider doubling that number for next year, and we can talk about it at the budget meeting. I just wanted to get it out tonight. Um, and potentially, especially after watching her presentation tonight, and they're spending. What'd she say, over two thousand dollars a month?
Twenty two.
Twenty two hundred for this.
Twenty two forty.
For this program. Um, if we double it, maybe give them, potentially give them a donation in this in January. And then be able to give them a donation again at the end of the year and help them, help them get by. Just something to think about. Um, they do a great job.
We don't want to pay that allowance down too much, though, because in a couple of years you won't.
Right, what's right.
That's the risk, is that you're eventually going to end up back at the.
Yep.
Principle.
Yeah.
But if you'd like, I will put four thousand in for us.
Yeah, it's just.
We don't have to do it, but I think it would, it would be something to consider.
Anything else, David, Mark, appreciate you coming in as usual. Uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
Um, I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye. We are adjourned at eight fifty eight.
And chief, if again, you look, you look.